I've called meeting to order. Commissioner Wardlaw is present. Commissioner Vasquez is on conference. Commissioner Nettleton is here. And Commissioner Flotis, we have a forum. Commissioner Wardlaw, you'll lead us in the Judge of Deuce's place. Back to your right.
I don't know if y'all can pick it up before, but when y'all were on the telephone, everybody was on a different plane. We were all over. We're not gonna do a quartet or anything?
Yeah, we were real dead about it. Number four, the two minutes from the previous meeting. We're taking Commissioner Nettleton's motion. Commissioner Flotis second. All those in favor? Mr. Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Got it. Citizens' comments?
Judge, never mind.
Okay, thank you. You did good. Nobody here.
Thank you, dude. Appreciate you, sir.
Real quick, before we get into this, Judge Calena and I think Judge Testanonis had received some paperwork on how to do, when they start up their courts, what procedure's gonna be done. We have taken those procedures and sort of implemented them into this. Part of that is there's hand sanitizer before you come into the courtroom and after you come into the courtroom, there are signs that need to be posted. Those signs have been posted. There will be, everybody that comes into the courtroom and before you come into the courthouse, that the other courthouses, I think their temperatures will be checked as you come in, so that's gonna be necessary. Everybody is, needs to be wearing a face curtain. We are, at this point, six foot apart. The court is, and even out in the audience, out in the gallery, they're six foot apart. Every other row is seating, so it looks like this is probably gonna be the new normal, at least for a couple more months. So, please, as you go down, we are on the second floor, so as you go down the handrails, go down the stairs, use the handrails. And down at the bottom of the stairs, there is hand sanitizer, there's hand sanitizer. When you go to leave the building, you can push the door open with your butt if you want to, but use hand sanitizer. Try to minimize as much touching with your hands as possible. And whatever you do, don't do this. Don't, try to keep your hands away from your eyes and your mouth and your nose. But just some general information there. Subdivision tracks? Okay. So nothing on this one? Certificate of compliance? None. Must be a report from elected officials? No. At motion. Commissioner Nettleton? Second, Commissioner Flotis? All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. A bill of bills? Move second. Have motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Yes, aye.
Five zero vote. Number 10, Hunter Duns, Jasmine Garcia, the New Texas Veterans Commission Claims Benefit Advisor, beginning of May 15, 2020. Is that here?
Yes, good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning. I can't see her. Play it. Is she, she's joining? She's ready to join then?
Yes, yes, she is. She's here in the office.
Okay. Well, congratulations and welcome on board. No action needs to be taken, right Adrian?
Negative. We lost the other BCA, the Defense of Claims Advisor. He went on to a district job and Texas Veterans Commission posted the job for, I think, a month. And she got selected. So she'll be starting, she'll be starting working from home, as per their regulations, but she'll be back in the office, I believe, by June 1.
All right, that'll work. Thank y'all so much. Congratulations for the bonuses, either way. Thank you so much. Thank you. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Number 11, audit his report? Move second. Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Flotis. Matt?
Is there any questions on the auditors report? Expense approval report? No questions, okay.
Real quick, I don't know whether to do here or do later. Our insurance, we're supposed to be getting a big check here soon. Do we need to do any payment for that, put it in an account, a special account? Or do we need to set something up? Or what do you want to implement?
A big check?
For the hell damage? For the all the damage?
For the hell damage.
For the hell damage.
Yes, that's gonna be your option, what you'd like to do with it.
I'd like to see it put into an account. We're gonna get it broken down by building and all that. They'll send a one, they'll send half of what they anticipate's gonna be the cost. That check will receive, and we have a breakdown, and they're fixing it, going to do more work and give us a breakdown, but they're gonna send this one check. And then we can set it aside, and we'll know exactly what it's for.
I just wanna make sure that we all know which buildings are getting what. I know in the past, there hadn't been this court, but where money doesn't, things don't get repaired, so I just wanna make sure we're all.
And we'll visit with that probably a little bit later, as far as, because one of the, this building here, the insurance company, the way they're also gonna do it is, they can help us to put out the scope of work, and it's already covered by our policy. So we're gonna do that, just have them help us with everything, go building by building. And then the court will need to decide, like at the fairgrounds, there was a plan on fixing some of them, and then there was the master plan to do away with some of the other ones. So the court will need to decide, before we get into that, which ones y'all wanna do.
Judge, I think it's very important that we break it down by departments, by precincts. And we have the Commissioners take care of whatever needs to be fixed.
That's okay.
But we need to break it down by department?
No, we'll break it down by building, and then the court will decide on what buildings need to be fixed. The problem with fixing or not fixing them, if we're gonna keep the building, we have to fix them. If we don't fix them, then we don't have insurance later on that building.
But if they're damaged, I mean, how's the court gonna act? So yours not damaged, or yours is damaged?
No, there's, we already have a list, and that's what they're working on right now, which building we're getting money for. And it says what building.
The adjusters are doing that.
Yeah, they're building on building, right? And we'll get that taken where.
The adjusters went building to building.
Yeah, yeah, they finished it.
Okay. What we can do is we can set up a separate line item, for this revenue coming in, and then the court can submit individual schedules, approve those, and then we'll appropriate accordingly.
That'll work.
Okay.
How is it decided on the contractor, did all this work, or he broke down and?
This one here, let's take for example this one. It's special. I mean, it's just, it's got so much detailed work that, you know, this one will probably be bid out by itself, Broadway will be bid out by itself, and then we can probably put together, like all the flat roofs, there's three of them here, put that together, and the individual from the pack, he'll help us, like you said, he's here to help us, whatever we wanna do. But that's what we were talking about, was we sort of need them to get it, and we give an opportunity for some of these buildings, the battered woman shelter, the fairgrounds, some of the stuff that can be done here locally, sort of put them together, that way individuals, smaller companies can have a chance, and they have insurance to bid, and then the bigger companies will bid on everything else.
That's good. Not gonna have a big, we have something here.
No, no, no. We're gonna try to break them out, try to help our locals. At least give them an opportunity to bid.
That's good, okay.
We have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye, Judge.
Five zero vote. Budget adjustments? Okay. Just gotta text. The audio on Facebook?
Nine thousand.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. That's all we can do. All right. Thank you. Other hospitals, $7,000 from available appropriations. Other?
Just four, man. These are for our?
We seem to be having a lot of them. We've already done a couple of these this year, haven't we?
Yeah, just simply because it wasn't not budgeted enough. The decision to go forward was this, was to not put in a blanket amount, was just to constantly rake it out of contingency as it came in. Now, this one is for our autopsies, that we seem to have higher autopsies costs than we did the prior years. Item C is the one I was just talking about, our CRS invoices, that in prior years just directly came out of contingency. We were in discussions to put up an amount in the sheriff's office for that, but the decision came to be, we'll just rake it off as it comes in, so that there is no overappropriation of those funds.
And the autopsies, I will tell you, there's more of a process now. And we did have some issues, and I think it's nowhere near the $7,000, but we did have an issue with keeping of an individual named Beredo, person bringing him down, because we've had more issues in the last three weeks. So it's a little bit more of a cost.
We are. It is, and these are uncontrollable costs, there's really nothing we can do about these costs.
And in the last three weeks, or four weeks, we probably had five inquiries, something like that. In fact, I'm sure, I mean, there's been quite a few requests here in the last couple of weeks. What are we gonna get?
Contingency, right now is the best place for this?
How much we have left in the?
We have roughly about $30,000 left in contingency.
Motion to approve, and take out a contingent. We're gonna have to do something about that soon.
We are, and there are plans. As the funds are coming in, we're gonna replenish.
Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second.
Second, Judge.
Second, Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Item B, transfer $500 from fuel to supplies. Transfer $500 from fuel to supplies for commitments, the other way around, right? Fuel to supplies or supplies?
Fuel to supplies. We're down to $32 in supplies with food distribution. We've been buying a lot of plastic bags and 10 boxes of, been costing us $180 for purchase, so.
So $500 from fuel to supplies. This is four. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Have a motion, Commissioner Flotis, second, Commissioner Nettleton. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez, how do you vote?
Aye. Aye, yes.
All right. Five zero vote. Item C, doctors, medications, $15,000, as reported by Sheriff Joe Frank Martinez, again, out of contingency. Matt?
This was the CRS that we were talking about. Inside this account is also, the sheriff does have psyche valves and other miscellaneous expenses that he has to incur for his employees, or the new employees coming in. So it's gotta get done. Contingency, once again, is probably the best place for this.
Motion to approve. Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton?
Second, Judge.
Second, Commissioner Vasquez. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Yes, aye, Judge.
All right. Five zero vote. Treasury report, this is a good one? This is a good one.
Only Commissioners, is, you showed our interest, I mean, literally, we went from about $9,000 down to about $4,000.
That was in one month. And there's other variables to that. We also had less money in tech pools. But I do wanna note that we're still making more than we had ever, even though we only made, we only made $4,500 last month.
Motion to approve. Second. Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Item 14, approval of building cream, Ranch West subdivision. Godless, please.
Godless?
Yes. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners and everybody else. Dallin Creek Ranch West subdivision is proposed by South Texas GeoMarx and Lance Vane and Martin from Callahan, Texas. This subdivision is located in District Number Two, outside of Amistad Lane Uzoning. This proposed subdivision is part of, is the remaining part of 2,500 acres tract. This one is specific, is 1,192 acres, and is proposed to be subdivided into 17 lots. The smallest one is 32, and the largest one is 203 acres. The previous part of this tract was approved by court on January 22nd this year, and that was named Dallin Creek Ranch subdivision. This one is Dallin Creek Ranch West subdivision. They're creating private roads, all of them are 60 feet wide. They're following existing dirt roads, and the county is not accepting for maintenance any road, streets, alleys, ditches, bridges, clovers, or any other such facility. Since all of the lots are size 10 acres or larger, the subdivision is not falling into the county's model subdivision rules.
Do you, do they need our approval?
I'm sorry?
Do they need our approvals?
They're requesting. They're requesting, they want to file that.
They don't need it.
Yeah.
Well, under Subchapter A, if they're doing public roads, not county roads, but still public, they still require the plat by law.
These are, these are private roads.
No, I understand, but they're still for public use.
Yes.
So they're still required to plat by law.
Yeah.
Commissioner, this is Commissioner Vasquez, right?
Yes, second.
Commissioner Vasquez, have you looked at the plat?
Yes, sir, I have. With, I have with, yes, sir, I have.
Are you okay with it?
Yes, I'm okay with it, Judge. We looked at it, I think, two, three days ago, and I'm okay with it, Judge. Now, Bo, Mr. Bo?
Who is it?
You, you intermissioned, or? And I'm so sorry, I couldn't hear you too good, not only because I'm at home, but got them rumors are all fucked up, but what were you saying, you had to make use of that?
Yeah, listen, I was on the. No, no, I didn't add, we were just talking about whether they needed our approval or not, but since they're putting in, in roads that will be used by the public, even if they're not county roads, they're still required to plat under Subchapter A.
Oh, okay, yeah, and they wanted to bring it up to the court to show, you know, I just to show that they brought it up to the court and we okayed it.
Okay. And wanna make a motion, Commissioners?
Yes, sir. Motion.
Okay. Have a second? Have a motion, Commissioner Vasquez, second, Commissioner Nettleton. All those in favor? Aye. Bo, did you say these are public roads, the public?
Well, they're not public in the sense that the county maintains them, they're public in the sense that other landowners have to access their property through those roads.
Not just landowners, the public is public, right?
I don't know how you could restrict the public in general from using them, but I, that'd be a question for the attorney.
Yeah, and that would be a question, that would, yeah.
Yeah. Since it's all private, they're gonna have to figure out how to deal with that themselves. I'm assuming they're doing it, I don't know if they're doing this through easements, or I'm not sure how they're doing this, to allow access. Or if they have a homeowner association.
Did they have a homeowner association?
Depending on what.
For the record, you said they do have a homeowner association.
They're proposing.
Okay. That'll work. We have a motion, Commissioner Vasquez, second, Commissioner Nettleton. Any other questions? We're good? All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Item 15, a thing for adopt quality assurance program for front dera road project. This is to approve, Judge? That'll work. Second. Have a motion, Commissioner Flotis, second, Commissioner Nettleton. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez? Aye. Five zero vote. All right. Let's skip 16, or let's skip all this, and then we'll just come back to 16, if y'all don't mind. Item 17, interlocal cooperation agreement between City of Dariel and Babardie County. We had talked about this once before. It's to do the receptive grants. We've done it before. Anna's already looked at it, has gone through it here a few times, and legal's okay with it.
Are we charging the city for it, or are we doing?
Bottom line is, we're gonna collect whatever money we collect, it'll be from Dariel and Spock.
Second, thanks within the city limits.
Well, that's not the city limits, yes, sir. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Overtime pay for food distribution, I wanna know if we wanna continue that. I know that there was, well, there's a lot of money being spent on it. I don't know if we could do it more between the hours, our regular hours, or if y'all wanna continue the overtime pay, but we need direction. I know that we weren't doing the disinfectant, we did this, we put this in place, because we were, actually, there until 2, 3 o'clock in the morning.
I like that motion, Judge.
Does it keep it, or what?
We keep it. Okay. Fair attempt. Thank you, Judge.
I'll second that motion, Judge, and then maybe we can discuss it here, discuss it here, you know, for the court in about two, three more weeks, but right now, I wanna second that motion.
Okay, we just, we need to be real careful, that, I mean, we need to try to keep what we're doing within our normal hours, because we are paying a lot of overtime.
We're not gonna get all of this money back from Fina, we're gonna be very limited in what we're gonna get back for what we spent on, on.
Bo, does that qualify? Does this qualify for?
I don't know that it will, because it's.
Who can answer that?
Well, we're going through two then right now, there's like two programs, Paul's looking at one, Matt's looking at another. We're going through that process right now. The only problem is, is that if we could keep our hours, I mean, it's needed. We all know it's needed.
I agree, but the problem is, is that if we can work it during our regular, normal hours, would be better for us. I mean, it just, it just is what it is, because we're spending a lot of money, we know that we need to do it, but, I mean, y'all are starting in the morning, and most of the food distributions are done by 3 o'clock. I don't know how come we're having overtime. And maybe, if y'all wanna keep it for two weeks till the next Commissioners' court, and then we are gonna come up with a plan.
I think, Judge, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I think we're just two more weeks, and we can finalize it and see what, you know, the other commissions think about it, we can talk about it in a few days. But yeah, and on my end, I'm trying to minimize, like, actually, I'm minimizing as much as I can right now with anything. No food, it just, it basically, you know, early mornings to go pick up food, but yeah, I just wanted to support on that. Yeah, I'm working on minimizing the least I can, you know, any other type of expense, leaving with the food.
You know, I'm all for these emergency situations, like fires and floods, and some of these things that we have to do, and paying our employees overtime, but we're getting back to, these are kind of the normal that we've been doing for a long time, and I personally have issues continuing that process.
Well, let's do this. If we do it for two more weeks, you know, I put it on the agenda for the simple reason that I'm having a hard time with it.
I'll save my motion, two weeks.
Okay. Commissioner Vasquez? Do you accept the?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion, just for two more weeks, I'll put it back on the agenda again. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
All those in favor? Against it, Bo?
Yeah.
Okay. It's 4-1 vote. Commissioner Nettleton voted against it. Item 19, approval of HR monthly report from April 2nd, 2020 through May 12th, 2020. Juanita?
Yes.
All good? Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Against it, Bo?
Yeah.
Okay. It's 4-1 vote. Commissioner Nettleton voted against it. Item 19, approval of HR monthly report from April 2nd, 2020 through May 12th, 2020. Juanita?
Yes.
All good? Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Commissioner Nettleton voted against it. Item 19, approval of HR monthly report from April 2nd, 2020 through May 12th, 2020. Juanita?
Yes.
All good? Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. Against it, Bo?
Yeah.
Okay. It's 4-1 vote. Commissioner Nettleton voted against it. Item 19, approval of HR monthly report from April 2nd, 2020 through May 12th, 2020. Juanita?
Yes.
All good? Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Item 19, approval of HR monthly report from April 2nd, 2020 through May 12th, 2020. Juanita?
Yes.
All good? Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Item 19, approval of HR monthly report from April 2nd, 2020 through May 12th, 2020. Juanita?
Yes.
All good? Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second, Commissioner Flotis. All those in favor? Aye. Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Item 19, approval of HR monthly report from April 2nd, 2020 through May 12th, 2020. Juanita?
Yes.
All good? Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion, Judge, and then maybe we can discuss it here, discuss it here, you know, for the court in about two, three more weeks, but right now, I wanna second that motion.
Okay, we just, we need to be real careful, that, I mean, we need to try to keep what we're doing within our normal hours, because we are paying a lot of overtime.
We're not gonna get all of this money back from Fina, we're gonna be very limited in what we're gonna get back for what we spent on, on. All right.
Commissioner Vasquez? All right. Five zero vote.
Aye.
All right. Uh, let's skip sixteen, and let's skip all this, and then we'll just come back to sixteen, if y'all don't mind. Uh, item seventeen, interlocal cooperation agreement between City of Delaware and Babardie County. We had talked about this once before. Uh, it's to do their Septic Net permits. Uh, we've done it before. Anna's already looked at it. We've gone through it three, three times, and legal's okay with it.
Are we charging the city for it, or are we doing?
Bottom line is, we're gonna collect whatever money we collect from Delaware and San Antonio.
Second, thanks within the city limits.
That's not the city limits, yes, sir. Motion to approve. Second. Have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, Second Commissioner Florida. All those in favor?
All right.
Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Overtime pay for food distribution. Uh, I wanna know if we wanna continue that. Uh, I know that there was, uh, well, there's a lot of money being spent on it. I don't know if we could do it more between the hours, our regular hours, or if y'all wanna continue the overtime pay, but we need direction. I know that we were doing this in fact, and we did this, we put this in place, uh, because we were actually there till two, three o'clock in the morning.
I like that motion, Judge.
Do they keep it or what?
We keep it. Five, period time. Thirty days.
I'll, I'll second that motion, Judge, and then, uh, maybe we can discuss it here, uh, discuss it here, uh, you know, uh, from the court in, in about two, three more weeks, but, but right now, at least, I wanna second that motion.
Okay. We just, we need to be real careful that, that, I mean, we need to try to keep what we're doing within our normal hours, 'cause we are paying a lot of overtime.
We're not gonna get all of this money back from them, or, we're gonna be very limited in what we're gonna get back for what we spent on, on, uh...
Bo, does that qualify? Does this qualify for them?
I don't know that it will, because it's...
Who can answer that?
Well, we're going through cheating right now. There's like two programs. Paul's looking at one, Matt's looking at another. We're going through that process right now. The only problem is, is that if we could keep our hours, I mean, it's needed. We all know what it means.
I agree.
The problem is, is that if we can work it during our regular, normal hours, would be better for us. I mean, it just, it just is what it is, because we're spending a lot of money. We know that we need to do it, but, I mean, y'all are starting in the morning, and most of the food distributions are done by three o'clock. I don't know how come we're having overtime. And maybe if y'all wanna keep it for two weeks till the next Commissioner's Court, and then we are gonna come up with a plan.
Judge, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Just in two more weeks, and we can, uh, uh, finalize it and, uh, and see what, you know, uh, the other Commissioners think about it, we can talk about it in a few days. Uh, but yeah, and on my end, I'm trying to minimize, like, actually, I'm minimizing as much as I can right now with eating. No food, just, uh, just basically, yeah, you know, early mornings to go pick up food, but, yeah, I, I, I'm just trying to support on that. Yeah, I'm, I'm working on minimizing the least I can, you know, any, any other type of expense, even with the food.
You know, I, I'm all for these emergency situations like sirens and floods and some of these things that we have to do and paying our employees overtime, but we're getting back to, these are kind of the normal that we've been doing for a long time, and, um, I, I personally have issues continuing that process, but, you know, see.
Well, let's do this. If, if we do it for two more weeks, I, you know, I put it on the agenda for the simple reason that I'm having a hard time with it.
I'll change my motion, three weeks.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Vasquez? You accept the?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, uh, just for two more weeks. I'll put it back on the agenda again. All those in favor?
All right.
Commissioner Vasquez? All those in hand?
All right.
Against it, though?
Yeah.
It's, uh, four, one vote. Commissioner Middleton, uh, voted against it. Uh, item nineteen, approval of HR monthly report from April second, twenty twenty through May twelfth, twenty twenty. Juanita? All good?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, Second Commissioner Florida. All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you. One already voted. Five zero vote.
Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, can y'all get closer to the mic? That might help, because nobody can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Well, I'm...
Okay. We'll try to move him closer. That'll work. I got mine closer. The masks ain't helping, so. Just so you know. Thank you, Anna. Item number twenty, authorization for county judge to sign easy vote, easy absentee software license contract, and agreement in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars for the period of June one, twenty twenty, through June one, twenty twenty-one, to be paid out of county clerk's computer maintenance. Budget line item, and I think legal's already looked at it, right? Everybody, it's all been approved?
We only have one, you can't be like, there's more to it. And, um, so I'm just gonna take it, Judge, just wanna make sure that if we were covered, our liability was covered.
So we could approve it now, just depending on that? Motion to approve, Judge?
Our second for discussion.
Okay. Have a motion, Commissioner Florida, Second Commissioner Middleton.
This is strictly to deal with the issue that we had in the last go-around with the mail-in ballots.
This is, this is, uh, we used to have those small AP tests, and they would use to put any upgrades for the windows. We went to Windows ten, it was a Windows seven, so we had to find a location. And this is what this is, the software license that sits on the speakers, and it allows us to track, help, and help occasions to put a ballot in, and the ballots coming out, and how they were responding.
And there's nothing in here that, that, that makes a move, 'cause there's discussions around the United States right now about doing strictly mail-in ballots only for the next upcoming elections and stuff, no in-person, that, that, that is not anything to do with it.
Not for all persons to vote by mail, no, sir. This is, the people that applied in January of this year, they're gonna have like nine hundred of those. Those people, I'm not here to communicate a ballot through this election coming up. In addition, if there are any new people applying for a ballot by mail, the local may include this as a too. This is a poll that we can use to...
No, 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 I understand. I just, there, there is discussion about, instead of doing in-person voting, that we do mail-in ballots only in some of the upcoming elections, and I have some... No, no, we haven't yet. I'm just making sure that we're all on that. I had...
How would you be effective with that?
Where do you start?
So you're talking about a lot more help, a lot?
We're going to have, we're gonna get a lot more, um, supplies, because what that's allowed to back in, um, to have a balance, for, um, equal staffs to prepare them to get them in the mouth, and then keep, you know, that, and then, um, most likely it's time to apply one and one ballot or two, because we don't have to...
Could you write up an estimate on cost and what that would be? I would appreciate that.
Have, have you got any direction?
Put the, you have to send each one up, though. But it's like Bo said, it's mandated, you have to send them all about, right? Oh, they still have to plan?
If, if he wants, uh, an estimate, do the twelve thousand, 'cause that's what the motion we're gonna do.
We have, we have a runoff election coming up in July, right? And, and we still haven't got direction for the governor as to how they plan on handling that election?
They made some changes, they increased, um, the early voting period, it does also involve we get it what's normal, that's a policy, like, for, I'm not sure, he increased that two weeks.
Do you have a pan, a plan in place, or will you bring us a plan on how we're going to deal with in-person voting during that early voting period as far as separation of all those types of issues?
One of the things that we've been talking about, uh, not to have it on the first floor, and, and like I told her this last week, you know, to be up to her, but maybe have it over there, uh, in our old Commissioner's Court. Have it over there for the two weeks, and if we need to remove benches or something in order to be able just to have it, where they can come in and have the line minimized, and that's it.
I did have this, uh, one of them yesterday, I thought, and they still, uh, except that to, to what you're suggesting, but, um, they're still...
I understand, but they're using our facilities, and they're using our equipment. So in our facilities, I'm more discussing, I understand they're in charge of it, but if they're gonna utilize our facilities, we gotta have something in place of how that's gonna have to function.
Well, my concern was downstairs. I mean, in reality, we were talking about it, you know, she was trying to set up different ways, you know, trying to work downstairs, and I like the normal, yeah, that's the kind of...
Does it have, from, my section, I'm going to, this is a, this is a, they're gonna come in and go back out, but, um, so this is, uh, I know this is a pay, does to be, I'm sorry, this amount of voters, I think it was more than certain of the, right now, and the number of people that would be coming out, and that's gonna require us to, to go separate the plans. But, um, I do have to hear back from one of the parties, uh, we're trying to, you know, Judge, and put up more...
I just want us to get prepared for, might mainly November more than this one, but this can be a trial run.
I almost, because it's required to wipe out every machine that's possibly, that's, that's one of the biggest things, and, um, I guess a lot of people are reacting, they're wanting to spend around, you know, news, something, so it's gonna take some instruction.
I mean, we got, we got six months to figure this out, but, you know, we may have to look at a different location.
However, however, we'll be on to the decision.
All right. We had a motion, uh, Commissioner Florida, Second Commissioner Middleton. All those in favor?
All right.
Commissioner Vasquez?
Aye.
Five zero vote.
Judge, I hate to interrupt again.
Uh-huh.